And then she went back to school and we were supposed to have a concert that night. But she's practicing in band with no feeling in her mouth. And I get text messages from Jess saying, please tell me this is going to be worn off by the company. Is that the one that's, no, that's the academy, right? Yeah, I have one of those at the library. Or I might have two.
Thank you.
Meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Everybody can please stand and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we're going to hear from Incero and Company CPAs about our external audit.
Thank you for having us here tonight. So we did meet or briefly before this, and I just want to touch on a couple of brief points. So if you have the executive summary, which is the document, I'll just go over the first couple of pages. So to start with, we did give the district the audit report of financial statements and supplementary information. And on that report, we did give the district an unmodified opinion, which is the technical credit for our clean opinion. We also gave the district an audit report on internal control or financial reporting and compliance in accordance with GAS because this is a real nitty gritty team. And once again, they give the district another unmodified. We were hoping as much as we could also issue reports on the same audit. You forgot it's unfortunate only due to, you know, being not being able to release certain limitations that we do need. We have not been able to get that part completed yet. Once that is complete, we will be working with Zach to get that done as soon as possible. But we currently, we do have, we have total expected federal expenditures of just over $4 million. During page three, it also issued a master and father letter to the district on which we had no comments or concerns. We also do the extra plasma water for the district. We had no, we had, once you get in on a cloud opinion on that as well. Do want to thank the new central treasurer for all the work she did for the years of service that with the tour, I mean, it was a seamless transition. And between the two, that obviously we were able to clean up a lot of issues that were in the, in the last comment letter. So we only have one comment for this particular year audit. For page four, one of the other from our communications is going to be sufficient for both our, our minutes of additional audit. And we had no comments of concern. If we stay current now, that a lot of our work situation was to let the board know about what Gassby's did. This year, Gassby's one more wanted and two, that had to do with certain disclosures as well as compensated absences. So overall, we did complete a, a detail audit of the district. We had no comments, no issues. We do want to thank staff once again for what they do, where they would sack up for the sack for today at this point. And every year he comes, he gives us a professional service that we come to expect below the staff. There any questions?
Thank you once again for thorough job and a good presentation to us earlier.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. May I have a motion to accept the financial report? Thank you, Chris. And a second. Aubrey? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, that brings us to the literacy presentation.
So at our last meeting, we discussed a little bit about some of the curricular changes that have happened over the last few years. And so we thought it was, be nice for Val to give you a little overview.
Okay. Oh, I'm going to give you a fast overview of about four and a half years worth of work, about 13 minutes. So hang on. And I made about 10 copies, sorry. So I'll just sort of disperse them out. People don't want to share it a little bit.
I have it.
You guys probably have this.
Does everybody have their own?
I have electronic.
You're good? Okay. All right. And no, I did not run here and out of rock, my heart is beating a hundred miles. I've done this before, once or twice. Yeah, it's always here. All right. So like it says, right, exciting things really are happening. And I thought before I started telling you about all those exciting things, I'd tell you a little bit about me, that I actually graduated from here. And so did my husband. We were both class of 1990, right in this place. And my kids also graduated from here. One's class of 23, one's class of 24. I was lucky enough to have both of them choose a different path. One went to Bosse's and didn't have the equipment, and that's what he does now. My daughter is a junior in college and she's studying healthcare management. So this was a end of the day picture. They were like, you got to take a picture of us because this is the difference between us, right? There's just a hot mess of dirt and the elements, you know, without even shoes on and all that. But both of them came out of here and are very successful humans and proud of this place for that. I started my teaching career on green, teaching kindergarten back when, I always say, back when Pinterest wasn't a thing. No one had a badge, walked out the door, bit locked behind you and you forgot your keys, like, good luck. So I started there. I stayed home with my kids for seven years. Then I came here and taught kindergarten, taught second grade, became the literacy coach. Was not asked to go to Bosse's, which I did for a couple of years, which was a great learning experience. But there is no place like home, like Dorothy says. So here I am back full time this year as the literacy coach K5. So that's my life really fast. So these are the three things that I thought might most interest you. Why did all these changes happen in literacy for starters? How did all these big changes happen? And what has happened as a result of these changes? So I have to say, Joanne and Shannon have been 100% pivotal in making these things happen. They, I've had like unprecedented access to them every month for years. I've been meeting with them and they have listened to me and my ramblings, for lack of a better term, and helped focus things and guide and ask really great questions and really allowed our school, like, if, without them being like, yeah, let's try that. None of this would happen and I, because I've worked regionally, I know lots of places where it doesn't happen because of impediments due to administration and the board. So these are all big deals and they're all big deals because of you all letting that happen. Did I mess it up because? I, I don't know. I can't make it move now.
You just point out his name and she'll make it move.
Okay, there it goes. Okay. Okay, so why all the changes, right? In a phrase, it's because of the science of reading. So you might be like, what on earth even is the science of reading? The science of reading is, as it says, it's an interdisciplinary body of research. It's really about a body of research. Is that a program? It's just about people having an understanding of how kids learn to read and write. And the interdisciplinary piece is around education, yes, but also encompasses psychology, linguistics, and even neuroscience. A lot of what we understand about how kids read is due to MRI scans and FMRI scans. So it's really important. It makes me feel like part of this community of people that are really smart and know a lot of things about things that we don't, and they probably feel the same way about us. So it's a pretty exciting business. There isn't a lot of, there isn't the amount of guesswork anymore that there used to be. I'm trying to think about how kids would learn to read and therefore write. So because of this increasing understanding and awareness, this really large, ever-changing body of research, a shift began, right? So a lot of people, and I, I use Whitney Point as the reference, but really it's not just about Whitney Point. This shift is about our region. It's about the state and it's really even about our country and changes in our understanding of the way that we've taught kids to learn to read. So we've made a shift from balanced literacy to what is known more as structured literacy, which relies on all of that research around the science of reading. Three of the big principles of structured literacy are that instruction would be systematic and cumulative, that it would be explicit and direct, and that it would also be responsive and authentic, right? And believe it or not, like, these have been some pieces that have been missing in our country's education system for a very long time. So a couple of the big pieces that I talk about to the staff are, number one, around effective instruction, right? That effective instruction is explicit and systematic, as we just saw, right? But then even past that, that kids would have lots of opportunities to respond and that we would always be doing one of two things, saying, yeah, you've got this, that's right. Or no, you don't have this yet, and this is why. Practice this with me. Let me show you what's correct. Now you try it. That sort of process and taking that understanding, not only from literacy, but through the whole entire day. And then that we would also have an understanding around the gradual release of responsibility, right? That the teacher is the smartest person in the room. That kids need to know what we know, that we need to explicitly teach them in the focused instruction part of the triangle. And that then we would guide them as we do it together. And that then there would be some collaborative piece where we're going to do it together. And then they would finally do it themselves versus, I'm, I'm going to tell you, now go do it. That's pretty disastrous. And I always tell people, if you ask kids to go and do something and everybody's hands goes up or you hear a lot of, I don't know, or what am I supposed to do? That's not about them. That's about us, right? It's about reflecting on our teaching and what it is that we need to, need to, need to do better. And the bottom of this, it's from a website, an article called Letting Go Is Messy. And I just think it's important to point that out because letting go really is messy. But it feels so much better to them and to us. So like I said, from balanced literacy to structured literacy, that shift, how did it actually happen? So in 2021, I just was like, we're, we're missing something here, right? So I started because I was only in the CEA, thinking about K3 and thinking about the role of phonics and how all of that was going. And I sort of just started following the guru of phonics who's pictured up there, top right, Wiley elevens, right? Just like, I'm just, I know he's, I know he, everything he puts out is based on research. I'm just going to start reading what he has to say and understanding some things better myself about phonics. And I had piles of papers everywhere, but I was telling everybody all the things. Like, do you know the most common way to spell sh is actually not S H, it's with T I? Like, I discovered this, right? Everyone was just so excited with me. I mean, who else cares, but, right? But these were the things that we didn't know, right? And then you're like, okay, if that is really the truth, then what am I spending most of my time teaching kids? T I or S H, right? Or at least I'm telling them equal parts, right? So all of that thinking just kept getting bigger and bigger, like a snowball rolling down the hill. Somebody recommended this book, Shifting the Balance, to me. And it really is six ways about shifting your instruction from balanced literacy to structured literacy. And it really opened my, opened my eyes. My husband always says, just highlight the things you don't want highlighted in a book because that's what my books look like, right? There's one big highlight, right? Every article, just highlight all of it. And then I also listened to the podcast, Sold the Story, which is and was a whole huge big deal. And you really had to remove your feelings out of reading that book and listening to that podcast and think, okay, what is true in here and what does this mean for our instruction? So then the district bought that book for the teachers in the CEA. And I was able to give professional development around that. And we actually listened to parts of Sold the Story, Sold the Story together. And everybody, it was so amazing that you will not find a staff like you do in this district anywhere. And I know that because I've worked other places. It was like, everybody, nobody was mad. Nobody was like, this isn't right. Or, you know, anything like that. They were just like, oh, this makes sense. And then what happens is you start exposing people to this. And then the things they're doing are a mismatch and they want to know something different. So then you're like, well, I just made a lot of work for myself, I believe. So we started thinking about how we could change tier one instruction for all students. And I did that by piloting a couple of things myself, right? Which we'll talk about in a minute. It's sort of hard to like create a straight path in this, but I started piloting some things myself. And we also got into tier one instruction. And that's where teachers started like, whoa, we're going to drink out of a fire hose here. We're going to really just put one thing down and do something else. And I think many of us for years have felt like this now, like, whoa, that's, that's a lot coming at us, right? So I put this in the packet, so I'm not going to read all of this to you. That would make me a really bad presenter. But I am going to tell you the things that I think are really important in these pieces that we've got going on in our school right now. So UFLY is a K, K2, we have used it K3, explicit and systematic phonics instruction program to support kids in K2 or like I said, K3 for us, but it can also be used as an intervention and we'll talk about that in a minute. So that was the first big piece. Then when you start implementing UFLY, you realize your assessments are not a match. Actually, Joanne realized that. So I was like, oh, great. I hadn't thought about that. I don't know what we're going to do instead. But what we are doing instead that is a match to our instruction and is very normed, very reliable, is DIBELS 8. And that stands, DIBELS stands for Dynamic Indicators of Basic Early Literacy Skills. They're just one-minute probes. It's a really quick assessment. It's really reliable, as I said, and it detects risk. And we administer this three times a year as a benchmark. Then, so we've got the phonics piece going. And then we needed to add, everybody was always like, what about writing? What about writing? What about writing? And ELA instruction. So we added Fish Tank K3, which is a ELA program that allows kids to work within grade level text. And it exposes them to complex, diverse topics and texts. And it integrates writing instruction. It really has upped the game for us. It's been spectacular. Then we added integrity for UPK4. UPK4 has this as their phonemic awareness piece, which is really just about manipulating sounds until you start adding the letters, then it becomes phonics instruction. And as the year goes on, that is exactly what happens. And then the added expeditionary learning is an ELA curriculum that is now running from grades four to grades eight. Yes.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Can you take one second to explain why it's important, the knowledge building piece?
Yeah, 100%. Okay. So the knowledge building piece is really pivotal in this because it allows kids to develop a greater depth of understanding around topics and be able to write about things that they're taught in the classroom. It's a great big equity issue, right? Where I don't care where you came from or what your mom read you or didn't, or where you've been on vacation. It doesn't matter. Everybody gets the same information around specific topics that also carry from year to year vertically. And so kids get this amazing exposure to things that they just never, ever would have had without the books. We, people say in education, right, that books allow kids to, books can serve as a mirror. So kids can see themselves, a window, so they can look out and see what other people might be like. And also as a sliding glass door, so they would then open the door and walk out and do something about what they know.
And even like, even more basic than that, which is huge, you know, so that no matter where you come from, like you, you have exposure to lots of different concepts. The, if you can learn, like if you're, you have good phonics instruction and you can sound out words, if you don't, can't match that to something in the world, some word that makes sense. If you don't have that vocabulary, because you haven't been exposed to it, you, you know, you still don't, you aren't really reading, you know?
Yeah, 100%. All the pieces come together, right? Like oral language, vocabulary, the phonics piece, fluency, comprehension. All those pieces have to come together and ultimately work so that kids can read and write on grade level tests, not at their level, but in grade level texts. It's an expectation for their grade level, even when it has to be supported. So then we, obviously not everybody is on grade level, not everybody's at the same place. So we also need some interventions. We are lucky enough in 2024, January 2024, to have the RISE grant come in and support our teachers and being able to be trained in certain programs like rewards, which is an intervention that targets, as you can see, word attack skills, multi-syllabic words, vocabulary, fluency and comprehension for anyone that can read at a fourth grade level or higher. Then there's word connections, which does a similar thing, only the level they, you want students to be able to read around a third grade level to be able to participate in that program. Then there's UFLY, which, like I said, is a K2 phonics program, but some of our kids really lack some of those foundational skills. So this covers kids as low as the individual letter sound relationships. So it can be used as an intervention for kids who get UFLY as tier one instruction. Like a second grader might go to reading support and be supported further with UFLY strategies. But it also could be that there are eighth graders who, and this is happening, right? There's an eighth grader who's getting UFLY because they just don't have these foundational skills. And then there was keys to comprehension also that came about, which it could be used as an intervention or as sort of like a layering over any of your tier one instruction. It gives strategies for comprehension to help kids be supported in that area. And it's for fourth grade all the way. And it's for fourth grade all the way up through twelfth grade. But all teachers have the option in four through eight to be trained in Keys to Comprehension. So what did this look like across the last four plus years, right? So you can, I showed this to my husband, he was like, I don't know, I would have put the years at the top. And I was like, look, it's too late. I don't know. I just need your feedback. I was lying. Um, so the years obviously are at the bottom. The pilot is indicated with a star, right? So if you see something with a star after, it's when it was piloted. That Shifting the Balance, Sold the Story, Me Attaching Myself to Wiley Glevins was in two thousand and twenty one. In two thousand and twenty two, I piloted Ufly myself and you, in Logan DeRusso's class. Best time of my life. It was so good. And we also were just trying DIBELS out throughout the building, right? We were like, let's just see what happens. Where are these kids? Do they have these skills? No, no, they did not actually, as it turned out, but they do now. So then we went to twenty two, twenty three, right? Where now we're at the whole school, the whole C E A is implementing Ufly. We're completely using the DIBELS. We're like, really forging a path here. There is no one to help us. We are literally forging away. Um, and then we're like the E L A piece, we started piloting that. Joanne and Shannon both asked if any, anyone could do it that wanted to do it in the C E A. Ten teachers said they would and we met, I feel like it was every other week after school. I can't remember if it was every week or every other week after school to be like, whoa. What do we do here? How does this work? Or how is it going? What, what do we need to think through with this? And then we piloted Hegarty and U P K. All of those RISE grant things were happening as well. And then last year, we were like full steam ahead, right? We had Ufly going, we had DIBELS going, we had Fish Tank going, we had Hegarty going, full force in the C E A. And the T R A, they started piloting E L A programs with Fish Tank and E L, which is Expeditionary Learning. And now we're in this year. Oh, wait, I forgot to give credit to the high school, sorry. The ninth grade teachers did this amazing thing with Rewards. They took that intervention program and they were like, wow, we've got a lot of kids here who can't read. We've got to help them. So they used a specific time of their day that was already set up. And kids just got this as an intervention, right? They were doing the best they could, which is how it all starts, right? We're just gonna do the best we can with what we've got. And then fast forward to this year, at the end of last year, I assessed all the eighth grade students. So that we knew how to group them more appropriately. So now the ninth graders got much more pointed instruction, those that need phonics skills and who are struggling with reading. They get this and it's a really amazing thing that the ninth grade teachers have pulled off. It's just so impressive. And then the T R A is full steam ahead with Expeditionary Learning. We're, we're just making our way through that, doing the best that we can. And then um the C E A, we've got Ufly going, still DIBELS. Fish Tank was updated this year. Good, that's great, because it's year two. We're so happy to change. But everybody really likes the changes. They're really excited about the updates. It's just kind of a little bit of starting over again. So, and then Hegarty as well, right? And kudos to all the teachers staying up late, doing all this work and taking all of this on, right? And then we get to a couple of pieces that I didn't want to ignore in this timeline. That in twenty, January of two thousand and twenty four, New York State caught up with us, which was so exciting. And they issued the literacy briefs. They were like, this is about the science of reading. We're doing structured literacy. Let's get after it. And then in January of two thousand and twenty five, they went a step further and released the ways that you should be teaching. The things that we want to see um in pre-K through three. Around teaching of fluency, comprehension, phonics, vocabulary, all of those pieces. And then all schools had to sign an attestation by this year to say where they were in this process. And I kind of feel like we brushed it. Um, because of all this work we'd done before, none of that was surprising to us. We had pieces in place already to allow us to check the box of got this. That wasn't the label, but I feel like it should have been. And then, oh yeah, Eureka Map, too. They're also doing a new map curriculum. New map, just kidding. Oh, right? So between every one of those years, we were here. We're like working our way through these poor people who were with me, who I was like, Hardy, when I got this, you guys, I'm gonna teach you how to do something I don't really know yet. But we can do it, right? And I feel like we have and we've worked through things and we've continued to work and do a lot of powerful work and a lot of great things for kids. So what's happened because of all these things? So um, is there data to show there's growth? Yep, there sure is. Um, we want the growth to look like this. Um, that's not what implementation science says happens. Implementation science says that it's like this, right? And there's this visual that is like, you start going up and then you drop down, there's a bear. Then you come up and you drop down, there's a volcano, right? It's just like things happen, so we keep adjusting. And when we see changes in, on the data, we're like, okay, why, why is this happening? What do we need to do differently? We're responding way, way more quickly to the data. So this is what's in your packet. So I asked people if they could tell me something about the changes in curriculum, right? I don't, I worded it in a way like, don't tell me any bad news. I can't take it. Um, so there is no bad news here, but it's okay. I don't think anyone would have said anything negative. Because really, that's not how people are in team meetings that I'm in with them. People are looking to make a way forward. They're not looking to find what's not going well. So I'll be quiet for a few minutes and let you read through some of these things, quotes and information that people sent me. And I'll work through them. Okay, so this is a slide I put in every um presentation I do somewhere in there. And I, it's applicable to all of your work as well and the people sitting back here too. That um what you do really does matter. And this is why I'll let you read that quote. Because sometimes I cry when I read it. So that's it. I say I'm the Lorax because I took this position so that I could speak for the trees, for the teachers. They're working really hard and they're doing really smart things. They're taking on so much. And um I am really super proud of the work that they're all doing, along with the administration that I'm lucky enough to get to work with. So if you have questions or time for questions or comments or. I'll happily try to answer.
I guess I just have a quick comment.
Sure.
I've been on the board for a long time. I've been very frustrated with our level of reading and competency and for a long time. I'm excited.
Yeah, so are we.
I, I appreciate that, that when you mentioned the ability to go.
Yeah.
Because to me, it was just a visual of just constantly like, it's gonna go through, it's gonna go through, it's gonna.
Yeah, yeah.
It wasn't.
Sure.
And I'm glad that this is exciting.
Yeah, and I think, right, I think some of that is we, I've had the same sense, right? I taught in classrooms where I'm like, okay, I felt like it wasn't quite right, but I didn't know how to fix it. I started as a literacy coach and everybody, like I said, this isn't just about our school. Like there are still people engaging in those practices thirty minutes down the road, right? So I'm just so happy we aren't. We found, we figured something out that's better and we've done something about it. If we knew something better and did nothing about it, that would be a terrible place to be in. But we've not done that, to the credit of a lot of people and a lot of moving parts and a lot of hard work. Yeah.
I, I like, I, I paused a lot on the one comment about two students and seeing the difference even with their own, their own.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I mean, that's, that's pretty powerful. I mean, there's a difference with children, but.
Sure.
If, if they didn't take that into account, so that, that's a quick.
A hundred percent. And there are other people who have even more children than two, who are like, my son is in sixth grade and he can't spell. Um, my second grader spells better than my sixth grader.
Where's that in here? Because I'm, I'm really old and I can't spell.
Yeah, I try to help you.
Latin and Spanish I could spell Lewis for dead.
Yes, I get it. I think in some, it's super interesting because we teach like fluency and patterns, right? So it could be helpful to you.
I think one of the things I noticed is that, again, I've been around a long time. And I've seen all of the different types of programs that we've used. And they've all seemed to have focused on one small area. This seems to be almost a compilation of all of those plus more. So it's not that we were doing everything completely wrong.
Yeah.
We were just doing this little bit right, and then we switched and we were doing this little bit right. And this just seems to combine all of that.
Right. I think that idea of explicit systematic instruction, there, there was some of it. But not in a way that teachers felt really supported and confident in what they're doing, for sure. Yeah.
I know that Ufly has allowed a lot of singing to happen. And I think the kids love it. And I think the kids grab hold of music as it approaches their language. And I think it's been wonderful. I don't know if you've seen with your children, but I know I've seen it and the students love it, my students love it. So um, and I think the best comment, there was lots of good comments. But the fact that the teachers are seeing that it's allowing for cultural diversity that hasn't been in, put into the curriculum on a, like a good concept. I think that's also very important for our children here at, at Whitney Point.
Yeah, and when you see second graders debating of, and like they're like so offended. That someone would be mistreated for some like physical attribute. Like what else could you ever want, right? And to be able to put forth in kids?
Well, A B Cs. How'd you learn your A B Cs? You're saying it.
Right.
I learned my states.
Anything else?
I was, I was excited to begin with, and I was even more excited when I saw the Lorax. What, what a, what a great finish.
Great. So glad, so glad.
I appreciate your enthusiasm because it helped us get enthusiastic.
No, so like, let me just say, I mean, I, I know you've heard me say this before. I, I mean, if it wasn't for Val, I mean, she, I mean, you can tell the energy, the boundless energy she has. And the devotion she has to this work and figuring things out and spending, you know. Every hour of the day, listening to podcasts and reading articles and, you know, like I have like my kids listen to me like listens to, because Val sent me another podcast that I listened to. But you know, I mean, and the energy um and commitment she brings to it. And inspires our faculty when they're tired and feeling overwhelmed every single day. Um, I, you know, I can't thank you enough.
Well, thanks. That was super kind.
Did your heart slow down?
A little, I feel like.
But we do appreciate the fact that you're back here. And while we know that you never really left because you were supporting everybody, but to have you to ourselves is fabulous.
Yes, and it is, it is really important work. And I always feel like there's not enough time in the day. So if you ever want to hire like a six through twelve literacy coach, um, I know some people. And I just am always like, how do you get, like, we need it to keep going, right? Six through eight needs this engagement, the same way that K through five does. There's just so many things that we could know better and do better. Not that people aren't already, but I'm just like, keep leveling up, right? And I think that could potentially be one way. If you, I suggested a bottle and can dry to hire another literacy coach, but, which I was told, okay. But I'm not sure how that would work out long term, so. But if it ever comes up and we have money, we don't know what to do with, that would be my vote.
You're a positive reinforcement.
Right, there you go. All right, thank you.
Really quick thing.
Sure.
I know I get to go into a lot of different schools and I see a lot of different districts. And I appreciate too that when other people can do it, because I think people that are insulated. Don't realize how wonderful this community and this district really are. Especially when you look across our area of some of the, I'm sorry, total car wrecks that are going on in certain places that. So I, I appreciate that very much, too.
Yeah, I, I do feel like me being at Bosse's for a couple of years, it was a great gift that um my learning curve went up. I made great connections with people and I got to go out and see other things that were going on. And you can feel really good about what's happening here. And again, the rate at which things can change here is unparalleled to anywhere else. Yeah, for sure, unparalleled. Who meets with their superintendent and assistant superintendent once a month? Nobody does that. Nobody does. And I make the appointment before I leave. They don't make it, so maybe they don't want to meet with me. Yeah, it's not a meeting. Yeah, and I meet with um Lauren and Erin also every two weeks. And I um meet with Matt and Allison as well every three weeks. So there's a lot of communication that goes on and I try to get to as many team meetings as possible. But yeah, there's a lot, there's just a lot going on. Yeah, yeah. So great. Okay, thank you. Everybody have a good night.
So I'm just gonna say, oh, another thing, like what you're saying about the teachers, they have been asked to do a lot. And, and the urgency around this, because as you said, Tom, and you've been saying for years and, and, you know. Uh, we cannot afford for any of our kids and we, you know, like our older kids have these huge gaps as a result of not having that explicit instruction. Yeah, so um it is like, we need to move on this. And I can imagine it being done as well and as rapidly as we have if it wasn't for Val. So we were very fortunate.
I agree. Okay, next up, we are going to go into our district-wide school safety plan hearing at six forty two P M. And I'll turn it over to Zach.
A little bit of deja vu. Um, we have to have an annual hearing for the district-wide school safety plan, which we typically do uh the first meeting in July. Um, that we did that, we had our comment period and we approved our plan for the twenty five, twenty six school year in August. And then uh S E D issued a memo on August fourteenth. There was a change in the law, not a bad thing, uh but it's called DASHA's law. And basically uh it's regarding A E Ds um and the openness of school districts to. Uh, have this information available um and to train people um how, how they work. And the, the new law requires that um. The district's response to DASHA's law is in our district-wide safety plan. Um, they put a timeline on it. It has to be in effect by January twentieth, twenty twenty six. Uh hence why I bring it to you tonight. Um, this will be the initial change. Uh, hence why I bring it to you tonight, um, this will be the initial change that we're proposing for our district-wide safety plan. Uh, it's only for the DASHA's law component, um, after the meeting tonight, I will put in our website. Uh, start a thirty-day comment period, anyone has any comments they'd like us to take into consideration or any other changes. Um, they can do that through the website and then, uh, I'll, I'll give you the next meeting, it won't be a full thirty days, but the meeting in December. I will bring it back to you if there has been any comments, uh, to again, it's one of our new school-wide safety plan. Uh, so again, just going through the plan itself, um, you know, we, we document every revision, so to go to the very last page. Um, previous revision was twenty-two, done, done on June twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. This revision will now be number twenty-three, on today's date, October seventh. And it tells you what we did on page twenty-four of our district-wide safety plan, we added DASHA's law cardiac arrest emergency response plan language. If you go to page four. Um, again, really, uh, we got our verbiage from New York State itself, um. But the ones telling us we had to be in the plan, uh, is stare rock, um, so this is kind of mirrors, uh, are what we planned to do. So again, on page twenty-four, we have the DASHA law opponent, um, I'll go through it real quickly. By the client in our state's DASHA's law, education law, chapter one ninety, twenty-twenty-five, the district has implemented the following cardiac arrest emergency response procedures. Each school building and athletic facility is equipped with at least one automated, uh, external defibrillator, AED. AEDs are regularly inspected and maintained according to mandatory guidelines. Uh, select staff, nurses and coaches receive CPR and AED training annually. Uh, SROs receive CPR and AED training biannually. Uh, each building-level response plan will include a cardiac emergency response protocol outlining how to recognize sudden cardiac arrests. Such as activate number one, AED retrieval and use and maps, uh, in the building of where each AED is located. Again, that's the change to the plan, um, and not, not, not a bad addition, uh, but again, why we're a little out of sync with, um. Doing two, uh, hearings in one year. Any questions?
I have a quick question, Zach. I, I know it's the law for AED in every building, do we have more than one AED in our larger buildings?
Um, so there's always gonna be a multiple one for like public use somewhere within those buildings, but.
You buy some kind of exit, right?
Yeah, by the nurse or something like that, uh, there's also like portable ones and go bags for like athletic trainer has one, nurses have one, that type of stuff.
I guess the one that I'm most, I'm most concerned about is our science, um, lab, our STEM lab. Because it is so far up and so far away and that is where kids are playing with a lot of things that could cause like a sudden cardiac arrest. I'm wondering if we could consider having one in that area and, or very close to the area or something. It's just a suggestion, just because it is sort of a higher risk area, I don't know.
Yeah.
I know we've been trying to look at those kinds of things at the college, so I didn't know if some ID.
Yeah, it's about going, um, yeah, I have to look at the TRA map specifically, I don't know if top ad word it is in that building. Or maybe it was part of the addition, but I don't remember seeing one of them.
We, we've ordered some new ones, um, out of the staff grant that are gonna be coming.
Yeah, I think we'll be strategic in whatever we do, it is an expense and it's one where you have, uh, annual, um, maintenance costs with them.
Right.
And then I, annual training, because it used to be.
It used to be like two years.
Well, you also, it used to be, this is my understanding of the guidance, is that they used to say, when in doubt, even if you don't have training, go, do, use it. And they're not saying that anymore.
Right.
So we are not direct, so we have to get people trained. So you can have the AED there, but we're not supposed to direct people to use it unless they've been, they have updated training, so. Um, it's like this cycle, we've got, yeah, we gotta build it in and it's, and it's a lot to become a trainer. So we're working on that, you know, we have all our coaches obviously trained and, um, but we, we're, we have to build a cycle of getting people regularly trained. And then get the AEDs accessible for them and make sure that they know where they are and, and they're in strategic locations and.
Um, and I don't know, but I, I have seen some P twelve schools go to the extra thing where they have the noxlin. And the blood's, um, safety kits.
Yeah, we have, we have.
Those two there, okay, just wanna, just open chat, yeah.
I know it was mentioned about the, the yearly, or the cost for it too, cause the pads and then checking them all the time. Is there somebody that's responsible for checking all those every year or twice or three?
Yeah, you make up the link, and then they make the recommendation, obviously, to, to engage for what we need to buy. But yeah, uh, it's not every year, but I think every five years or so we end up buying, you know, substantial amount of replacements. Um, and then the initial costs themselves, I mean, they, they, the unit is, you know, pretty, uh, sophisticated technology, so it does cost a little money. Um, but again, it, it's hard to be strategically locate these things wherever a potential emergency might be.
Oh.
Keeping it kinda, you know.
I know the pads have expiration dates, but I might like, to even make, you're supposed to check them to make sure they're still charged and they're still blinking. So there's some of this.
Murphy and you had just, I think I got a lot of train actually, they're going around through all the buildings.
Okay.
Yep.
Um, do we offer the teachers to take the training if they want it?
Well, that's what we're talking about, so like, for example, UAHS does it for me, but they only will do twelve people at a time and they. And so we have to get somebody to train, so what we're trying to do is get somebody onto our staff, that's a trainer. Well, you're not on our staff.
I'm more.
And, and we can't pay you, so.
No, I'm, I'm a Red Cross volunteer, does, can it be Red Cross or does it have to be American health, American?
You, are, are you trained to do the training to certify?
Yes, I'm.
You currently are, well, well.
I've done it, I've actually done it for Murphy a couple of times.
Ah, okay, all right, well, so we'll have to talk about it, yes, cause we're having a problem to ha- have enough people trained. At a regular enough, um.
Cycle.
Cycle, and then freeing up the people to do that training, you know, it's. Not that straightforward, we also, so I just wanted to add to, yeah, so the, um. Uh, we also just, you know, we have these like go emergency kits in every classroom, which are actually redoing them. Um, and, um, we offer periodic naloxone training for everybody who wants to, so there's sort of kits all over the building.
Right.
Lots of people have been trained.
I'll bring people doing all over too on their own, so there might be people in the district that are already trained that are still, that are sort of fine on their own.
Mm-hmm, correct, yeah.
So we need a motion to adjourn the, um, safety plan hearing at six fifty-one. They have a motion. Thank you, Chris, and a second?
Second, oh, sorry.
I have Michelle. All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? Do we have the need for an executive session now? But after we may, okay. Correspondence, we have none. Um, policy discussion, we have none. See for first reading and second reading, there are none. This brings us to the first opportunity for comments from the public. Since I only see employees here at the moment, I am not going to read the guidelines. I'm sure that you have heard them enough and understand them. Um, at this time, if there was anybody who would like to speak. Please pipe up.
Something real quick, um.
You. Three minutes.
It's a pretty cool piece of Whitney Point history, was proud of the TRA, um, it's really, I made, uh, its way up to my office, um. We're actually gonna put this back in the display case outside of the TRA auditorium, where there's like a lot of historical, uh, Whitney Pete, uh, Whitney Point. Um, artifacts over the years, um, I'm gonna pass this around, take a look at it, and there's a little thing on the back that, you know, it's interesting.
I think I have one of them, actually.
I, I have two at the library.
Senior Center or something.
I have two, yeah, there's a library and then I have two in the TF yoga, um. And there was also one that was, um, made when the TRA building was originally built. Um, they did it in blue and maroon, so I have both of those and I think I have two of those.
Yeah, and if they're down there now, it's with you, so honestly.
They may be.
Yeah.
The seniors, when I was at the senior center, um, a couple of seniors would say, the boys should pick on the girls and take your shoes off and set them out on the window. Shut, 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 still, at the top of the building. Prayers, we're always there.
Part of human nature.
Yep.
Do you guys have any, um, problems with this continuing to commendations while you take a look at that? Cause I don't wanna stop you from looking at it, but. Commandations.
Okay. Uh, so first, we'd like to start with the Board of Education members for their dedicated service and commitment to the Whitney Point Central School District. And an acknowledgement of school board recognition week, which is actually next week, October thirteenth to the seventeenth. And we have a little video here for you.
I like that one. Just rendering.
Yep.
See if I pop it ahead, will it?
Sometimes if you do pop it ahead, it will keep going, yeah. See if you can pull it past it. There you go. No goats, no glory. Nice. That's great. Very nice.
It's awesome.
So we thank you for your service, there's a little gift there and a certificate and then eventually we'll get the official state recognition that comes.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, you know.
Can we get a copy of the video?
Yeah, yeah. Share it with you.
That, that's really nice.
I mean, the certificate and stuff is nice, but that.
Yeah, that means a lot. I think when you're, I guess, we got things from the CEA and I still got.
Yes, there was a little jar that, um, had been painted and.
Yeah.
Okay, and we commend the Whitney Point PTA, Miss, uh, Dantonio, Mrs. Prokop and CEA families. For a fun family weenie roast held on September twelfth. The, and I found, if anybody was there and you saw the weenie glasses and the media. That's like, where do you find these things? Yeah, it was so funny, um. The New York State FFA officers who visited the TRA on September seventeenth to meet, have breakfast with and do some team building exercises. With our, uh, own chapter of the FFA and thank you for Mr. Miracle for making that happen. Uh, the Whitney Point varsity field hockey team for representing the district at the National High School Invitational in Pennsylvania from September nineteenth to the twenty-first. They came home with a victory against Lake Lehman PA and a tie in overtime with Cherokee High School of New Jersey. High school and TRA students are participating in the chalk the walk, um, uh, for, about, for mental health awareness campaign. By decorating our sidewalks with words and encouragement of kindness and positivity and beautiful pictures. I don't know if you got to see any of that, but it was, uh, it was much beautiful artwork. And, um, the TRA fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Driscoll, for recognition on WICC TV, uh, TV and their teacher of the week. Uh, do we have that segment in September, on September thirtieth? Yeah, okay, all right, so you've.
That's Olivia Driscoll, since we've got like three Driscolls.
Yeah, yeah. It's Olivia, um, and then I just wanna say again, thank you to everybody who helped out with the accident, um. It was, like I said, it was very scary, could have been much worse, but everybody was quick thinking and, but calm at the same time. And thank goodness, everybody was okay. So can, I appreciate those people enough, thank them. Okay. Jordan. It's time for you.
Okay. I didn't have a specific topic for the report this week, so I focused a lot on some complaints. So I went around and asked a bunch of students if they had any complaints in their student life. Or there was any improvements they think we could make in this school. And there were a lot of answers, but I focused on like the main ones, like the ones that kept being repeated. Uh, one of them was engagement. People are finding the classes too boring or they just, they are tired of sitting in a room for forty minutes. I've that period after period after period, now I don't have any specific solutions for that one, but. In some classes, I thought we could just implement more of like, a hands-on learning or more. Of like a direct approach, so people aren't just like sitting and being lectured for hours and hours. Okay, that's one of them. Okay. Um, this one, I don't think we can really do anything about it, but it was when I heard a lot, hallway traffic. People are just, they're standing in the middle of the hallway, talking to their friends or they're walking on the wrong side. And people are constantly being late to their classes because of it and they're getting written up or yelled at by the teacher because they're late to class. But they're late to class because other people are blocking the path. So I don't know, I thought maybe we could make like an announcement about that, you know, like telling people to walk on the right side of the hallway or just. Or just, you know, telling people to stop, stop in the middle, okay. Okay, another one I heard a lot was conflicting clubs or, um, conflicting schedules. Um, a lot of the athletes specifically were complaining that they have practice like every day after school, right after school. They don't have time to like go to clubs or get help from teachers. So I thought maybe we could just talk to the coaches a bit, see if they'll, um, put the. Put practices down an hour or something or get like a more concrete schedule that allows like more time for the students to. Go to multiple places instead of just the one every day. Okay. This one wasn't mine, this was Billy's, um, she noticed that a lot of students were upset that our dances don't have themes. And I know that kinda seems, you know, not important, but, uh, lots of students, they're really excited for the dances. And they want to like do more for the dances. And when they're just, you know, homecoming, oh, that's fun, but you know, lots of other schools, they do like under the sea. Or like a Disney themed one and lots of students just wanted to have a more homecoming dance. So I mean, a more, a more themed, a themed dance. I don't know if she came up with any solutions for that, but I thought. Obviously budgeting would be an issue for that, cause you know, to buy all the director decorations or themes, you're gonna need a budget for that. So I thought maybe we could do like a school-wide fundraiser, like how, uh, the sad club recently did a car wash, we could do something like that. Um. I didn't hear a lot of this one, but I thought it was important to add bullying and harassment. A lot of the bearded kids are like, the more Gothic or emo thing, I guess, I don't wanna really stereotype, but. You know, um, they're complaining about being called names in the hallways or, you know, just getting picked on by their peers. So, you know, oh, as always, we do do bullying and awareness things and we, like the chalk the wall, we bring awareness to that. Maybe just a few more or like more presentations or like. When we do do the presentations, I've noticed that it's like a wide demographic. I think we should focus like more on a, on a school level, if you get what I mean. So instead of like the big picture, we really focus on like a specific school problem.
Like what bullying looks like within the school as opposed to.
It's just bullying, yes, that's what I meant.
So, um. So interestingly, so what was gonna happen moving forward is. our board members and the advisory group, which consists of the people who also were interested in being board members, are going to work with some of the people who are going to be on your Student Voice Committee to make sure that we're like tapping into like what concerns are, like the ones that she's talking about right now. And then they're going to then work, meet with the principal in the high school, who would have, you know, the ability to work with teachers to address some of these issues and figure out with the students how we're going to do that. And then moving forward, what will happen is the Student Voice Committee and then our advisory group then will come and give you updates on, so this is what was raised, this is what's been happening. This is what, you know, the issues are. And there may be times from, but you may decide there might be something happening, I don't know, in education or or you have a question about something that's happening in the schools. And then they can, you can ask them to then like survey the student body. But we, Jordan went to and Billy went to a training for board members and.
For student board members.
Student board members, which is also kind of, it's an evolving thing because it's a new thing in most places. But one of the important things that they let, they tried to reiterate with us is to not put students on the spot to be able to speak for the entire school, student body, or even, you know, anecdotally, because, I mean, so we have to find ways to make sure that we're really having a representative perspective and then helping them with through this, this voice piece, like find ways to advocate for themselves and work with the powers that be, meaning the high school. If we're talking about high school issues, then the high school administration and how do we make some changes? And then keeping you informed of that, you know, but there may be also times where you say, you know, we'd really like to know about this or how this is impacting kids. And then Jordan and Billy and the advisory group can then figure out, maybe we need to survey kids or maybe we need to have discussion groups about this or, and try and get some feedback and then they would report to you on how that's going. Again, like this is sort of a work in, you know, progress for all of us to figure out what's the most meaningful way to do this. But obviously, we want, it's a great opportunity to tap into the experience of kids and make sure that our school's doing a better job and is responsive to how, what their experience is, so. So, and by the way, Jordan does anti-bullying education in our school. She's a second step leader and she also does announcements. So if she wants to announce to stay on the right side of the hall.
I do. I find out about club meetings and they don't put in announcements, so I just throw it in there. Like I talk about the car wash or whatever I hear in the hallways, just.
Always to the car wash. So I have two suggestions, just my own personal ones for the traffic issues in the hallways. Why don't you see if you can do a poster contest? Um, just, you know, like reminding, you know, like don't stop in the middle of the hallway or, you know, just to do something fun like that, that then things that can be put up and it's not just an announcement. Um, puts a little bit of fun into it, utilizes people's artwork. As far as the dances are concerned, I have a lot of decorations at work. I also make a lot of decorations, so I would volunteer to help you guys with that even without a budget. Okay, I basically can't do anything about Thursday. But, but, but like if there was something that you guys felt that would be fun to do at the homecoming dance that, you know, we could potentially do, that we might be able to source before then, I would be happy to do that for you guys.
So we need to work with the high school administration.
Oh, no, I know. Yeah, I was gonna, that's what I was gonna ask. So, you know, so this came to us. So what's the best mechanism for us to get information back to you about what, like, I know Steph just sort of just let her have some ideas, but maybe sometimes it's not best for us to say those ideas right now. So what might be the best way for us to get that information to you, to where it needs to be, what's, what you think?
It's okay for Stephanie to say, I mean, but we just, in order to make that, those things happen.
Absolutely. But if we had something like you wanted to say.
But if, so like if Jordan comes to the meeting or Billy comes to a meeting and says, this is what we've uncovered is issues and concerns. And so this is what we're working on with the high school administration, but one of the roadblocks is that we don't really have supplies for those kinds of things. Then Stephanie might say, well, hey, I have, you know, I'm willing to help out with that or, you know, or somebody else who's in the, who knows, whoever happens to be in attendance that we could problem solve here. Yeah, we can do that, but we just can't like, as a board, say, the next dance is going to be.
That's why I, that's why saying these are my personal ideas and obviously nobody has to do them and obviously.
But so you've now offered your support. So as we move forward, yeah, we can.
Do you guys play music while they're transitioning?
On Fridays.
On Fridays? So I'm curious as if the crowds are less on Fridays and if the lines move. Because that music is known to keep people moving. So I am curious about that. Yeah, it does. Yeah, it does. So.
Interesting.
Is that your experience, Jordan, or no?
Um, not really.
And all I, all I have to say is I am super glad that they're talking to each other and not just looking at their cell phones and walking down the hall. So I will say good.
Find a way to keep people from stopping in the middle and blocking things. Take it to all of the local places where people are shopping. My wife literally came home today and said.
Well, I think probably a lot of the issue is the short period of time we have between classes. I mean, so it's, it might not have been an issue before, but get to the bathroom to get to your next class.
So any roadblock becomes a big roadblock.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It's getting him ready for driving.
Sorry.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jordan.
You still don't?
Okay. Um. This one I thought was important to mention. Um, a lot of the girls were complaining about the sanitary products because specifically for the tampons, the applicator is cardboard. And they are not a fan of that. And I know we don't have a lot of budget and obviously the school provides those for free. I thought just like any upgrade that's not cardboard would be nice because I, there has been a lot of complaints. Um.
I agree.
I don't know that the environment does though.
I know the environment doesn't, you know.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, this one is more specific, just student ones. I haven't really consulted this way yet, although I probably should have. But they specifically, for like people who have been in Spanish for four years, lots of like other schools will go on like a field trip somewhere. And a lot of the people were hoping that we could just do something like that too. So we could be like fundraising for like the first four years and then eventually if we like take Spanish all four years or something like that, they could go on a field trip at the end, just, you know, to also to increase, you know, students who are taking that class. Because not a lot of people are taking the languages class right now. Okay, this is my final one. Um, now, actually, a teacher said this and they asked to remain anonymous, so I will be respecting that wish. But they said that even if they like request people to stay after and get more help, they won't do that. So they like suggested implementing a tenth period where students, it's like, it's not an actual period of the day, but it's still technically is, but it's not like everybody has to stay. Specifically, if specifically a teacher requests you to stay after, you have to stay after during that tenth period. And if you don't, it's like considered skipping a class or, and you get like an attention or a write-up or something like that, just so students need the help, can actually get the help. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. If anybody has any comments or concerns or questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you.
Very good job for your first time having to bring back a report. Thank you.
What was my next report? Do you still want me to focus on specific complaints or do you have a specific topic we want?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're trying to get everybody together and everybody can, we can do, we're gonna do eagle time except for when you have to do second step, so that we'll pull everybody together and we'll talk about it. These, everybody who's involved with this has, they have very busy schedules.
Yes, you do. You don't have.
No, don't be sorry. Don't be sorry, you're doing great.
Okay, um, the consent agenda. May I have a motion?
No move.
And a second? And? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Appointments, the appointment of Sierra Monahan, full-time teacher's aide, effective September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, may have a motion. Thank you, Tom. In a second. Thank you, Chris. Any questions or comments?
We have a number of openings.
Okay.
We're still hiring.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstains? Lynn Gem, bus monitor, effective October eighth, twenty twenty-five. May I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Molly. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Monica Willsack, bus driver, effective date, subject to fingerprint clearance. May I have a motion?
I won't.
Thank you, Chris. And a second?
Somebody.
I'll take Michelle for that one. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Donation, this was received school supplies from Senator Webb's office, twenty-five backpacks, seven boxes of tissues, forty-one packages of filler paper, five bottles of hand sanitizer, eight personal-sized packages of tissues, four packages of tab divider, one package of construction paper and one box of bandages. May I have a motion?
No move.
Thank you, Chris. And a second? Thank you, Benny. Any questions or comments?
Let me think. Then the red office.
She seems to be very involved and doesn't forget the smaller areas of her district. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Equipment for disposal. An audio audiometer? Yeah, audiometer. Sorry, I first read it as audiometer and that wasn't right. Audiometer. I know, I know, I was trying not to.
Saying it about. Sorry.
Um, this is going to be disposed of through Hopkins calibration for an account credit. So may I have a motion? Thank you, Tom. In a second.
Second.
Thank you, Molly. I just want to comment that I do appreciate the fact that the district tries to dispose of things in an appropriate manner. Like sending things to auction, so even if the district doesn't get a little bit of money from it, we're, it's not just yeah, sitting around and getting a little bit back for it here again, you know, account credit and it's going to be disposed of properly. So I appreciate that that's always enough, making an effort here.
Yeah, it's a, it's a level of sound.
Yeah. It was just my brain not processing the word properly. Okay.
Firstly, thought about putting that in the display case off the terrace too, like they were charging me down there and asked me if he'd be interested and he said he'd give us a fifty-dollar account credit, so.
Hey. I've been seeing a lot of those on my Amazon account, Amazon account recently because Charlotte's been looking for one to use as she's teaching and so, yeah, I keep getting those weird suggestions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? This is a refund of real property taxes pursuant to section five-five-four of the New York State Real Property Tax Laws. The total warrant changes four thousand sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. May I have a motion?
A move sadly.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Benny. Since we have some newer members, could you please refresh us on how this works, why sometimes it happens?
Yep. From August, right to the board, the ability to develop the school tax warrant. In September, the bills go out, annual district. You can report your school taxes. A lot of this information is frozen in time at certain point. Sometimes the way that certain projects work or the certain agent individuals or sometimes clericoiers. Certain, again, exemptions may not be applied correctly or they get dropped off and not noticed until the bill comes out, right? The bills are already out, we already have our certain amount of money distributed equally amongst taxpayers. Typically, the school, we budget about fifteen thousand a year for normal. Again, really clericoiers that can have it along the way. Last year was a exceptional year. And just so we put that in reference, we've never since I've been here, fourteen, fifteen years, we've never gone over that fifteen thousand dollar amount we set aside. Last year it was around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and there was a one-town specific problem. We did get about seventy-five thousand of that back. And the way that we can get money back from the state, it's a little wonky, of course. If it is a stark exemption mistake, the state will make us whole. Any other type of mistake, agricultural, agricultural, we do not get that money back. So this one particular is an agricultural exemption, so to go against that fifteen thousand that we budgeted for those mistakes. Thankfully, and it's October seventh, and this is the only one we've had, so it's way better than last year and I think so that we can work out. So there'll probably be another couple in the November meeting, but that's basically the background.
Any questions from the board?
I was just, I'm trying to check the public site to make sure that document didn't get on the public side. And I can't get to it. So is there a way we can double check? That, that document, we don't want up on the public side.
I talked to Stacy, she made it private.
Okay, okay.
And I'm on the public side.
You're on the public side and it's not there. Mine keeps making me get to my login spot, so thanks. I just wanted to double check. Thank you.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, Chris, you're up with the review of NISBA proposed resolutions.
Me. Oh, sorry. I was.
Yep, you're right.
Okay, um, so just, Chris, you're.
Yeah, good, I'll take it.
I'll give it to you. Yes. So you got the same two as last year, so fifty-first senate district.
You're over offer? Over.
Um, and then also one hundred and thirty-first Assembly District, Jeff Gal.
Yes, we go.
Yep, both of those again. And then as far as the proposals go, all of the proposals were unanimous across the board. So there was really no discussion or any kind of debate anywhere for any of them. There were two that I wanted to explain just because the votes seemed kind of odd and there was rationale behind them. Um, one being Resolution thirty-four, and that is mandatory implementation of daily recess for all students in schools that serve exclusively elementary grade levels in addition to scheduled physical education classes. And their stance was a no vote only because it was too poorly worded. The rationale was that you can implement this at a local level anyway, and for our school, we do it already anyway. So until the wording is worked out a little bit better, they would like to vote no and not clarify elementary level more specifically. So that's that one. And again, you can vote.
Yeah, I listened to the discussion.
Right. Um, and then the other one too was with regards to Regents exams. And the vote there was.
Which number was it?
Sorry, thirty-one. And I've got all these notes in here for you too. So that was thirty-one and the vote there was no also because it's already being worked on essentially. So to let it kind of play out with the Blue Ribbon Commission and let it kind of fizzle there.
That one didn't pass last year.
Yeah. So I've got those two specifically dogged here and everything is highlighted coordinated for you.
Oh.
There was one other thing too. So because the annual meeting and the meet the candidates meeting are, have the last few years been poorly attended and kind of redundant meetings. There was, um, a motion to kind of restructure the two meetings. Um, the feedback from both board members, superintendents and candidates has been poor kind of relating to each other. Saying like their side's not coming, their side's not coming, they're redundant, the questions are kind of overlapped. So we created a subcommittee of which I had joined. Um, so we are going to begin kind of forming a plan. To determine how we're going to structure it for the twenty-twenty-six election year and kind of determine how we will, um. Arrive at the questions used for the candidates for that year and most likely it'll go out to the districts like how, what questions they want to ask. That way they can get the candidates in advance. So everybody has time to prepare and that will, that plan will mostly be done via email. So I can share it with all of you and then send it back to them.
And the biggest complaint has been that there's not been enough time left for, um, questions by, to the candidates. Been too much talking by the candidates and not enough.
Yeah. And then last year too, when we went, there was a debate the same night. So two of the biggest candidates weren't able to attend because they're busy at the debates. So there you go.
Thank you.
Now it's cool to go to.
It is cool maybe, isn't it?
It was so sweet.
It's the only way to start getting.
Yes, it was.
You know what they're doing there. Will not be passed on Thursday night. I guarantee you that. I've sat there for seven hours voting, so.
Well, that was, I was like, I expected it because you, the way you described it, I thought it was going to take a long time and they were just like, and I was like, wait, wait, wait.
Thank you. And you can join on Thursday night if you want to for a little while. You might not want to stay the whole time, but you could get a real sense. Anybody's allowed to. Um, you just can't be a voting member, but you're allowed to listen and to hear the, how they debate and it's a virtual meeting. It's quite interesting.
Right.
I have the link. I can send it. I can give it to Stacy if anybody wants to join again.
Thank you very much. Um, superintendent's update.
So. Can I just clarify? So what's happened? There's no meet the candidates meeting this year? Is that what they're saying?
I think they're still going to do it this year, but then after that, they're going to try to change it.
Something, something only do it election years.
Oh, yeah, the, the meet the candidate is only election years. That is true. That's why they're trying to reevaluate it now. Yes.
For the twenty-twenty-six.
But there'll still be the other one that they do on their odd years. And that's they usually have a presenter.
Just the annual.
Yep, at the end, yep.
Okay.
And, uh, big dinner is at Shenango Forks this year.
Okay. Um, superintendent's update. Well, I was going to talk about the student board member process, but I kind of did that already. So that's what our kind of vision is moving forward. Um, and as I mentioned, um, it's been challenging getting, um. Like you guys are involved with everything. So it's there, um, we're going to try and use eagle time moving forward. Um, if things come up that you feel like, would you like to know how, how the students are, are, are thinking about this or what their experience has been with that? You can always e, send me an email and then I can work with them to sort of figure out how can we best sort of get the pulse of what's happening in the student body. The other piece of it is really they represent not just the high school.
I was going to ask about that.
So we have to figure out like, how can we do that in the other buildings to like, you know, reach out, um, again, given their busy schedule. So, um, I'll have to, um, work on that also. Um, just, uh, to have on your, um, uh, awareness that we are working on trying to revamp our presentations. And Val, you know, was something that we thought would be, uh, interesting for you to kind of get a little bit of insight about. Um, where we have firmed up the, having, um, some people from Bosie's come out and talk about, uh, the changes that are happening. High school graduation requirements, portrait of a graduate, so that you just can have, you know, just brief presentations, just so you have the basic, you know, um, information and you can ask questions. Um, anything else that was, that was important there? So I would like it to be like, so if you hear about something, like you get those new, uh, school boards association newsletters. And you, there's lots of articles in there about lots of educational topics in New York State. If there's something you want to know something about that's, how is that, um, playing out in Whitney Point? That would be something that we could do, like a mini little, uh, presentation or at least a board discussion on, just so that we can, you know, like I said, keep the conversation open, make it meaningful for you. Um, and make sure you're getting the information that you, that you want.
I, I will say the presentation and the information that Pop first gave us today tonight, especially for our community.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness, I wish we could get that out.
Well, he's go, he's gonna, um, he may have heard me say that. He's going to give me some information. He's coming tomorrow to me with the superintendents. So he's gonna, he's got some like little flyers and stuff that we can turn into, uh, to posts.
Right. In a nutshell, it was people who are twenty-five to fifty-five. Who've never received an associate's degree. They could have any kind of college degree. They could have had college credits. They can go free.
In high.
I need.
Area.
I need the areas. Yes. So I was like, okay, yeah, and education, teaching, business, we're all in the high needs and healthcare are all in the high needs areas. And so is it just no charge? So maybe you can get a free computer?
Yeah, so yeah, we're gonna, so we're gonna put that out. I mean, that, I mean, there's lots of people that could really impact and it's really, and it's true of any community college, the state, um, program. So, um, if you know anybody that, that would apply to, let them know. Um, yeah, and, uh, uh, we, next time, uh, Gracie Schragger is going to come and talk to us about math and movement. Just give us a little bit of a demonstration on what that's looking like, the work that she's doing with teachers and the CEA. Um, and also they just give me a reminder for, to, for you to notice all the lovely artwork behind you.
It's all the cooking logs.
Yeah, I know.
And then also I guess I can tell you it's not too early to tell you that we are having, um, every year there's like a holiday, uh, this, uh, Southern Tier Food Bank does a holiday repack. You probably see, I don't know if you see it on the news and all the politicians come to that, um, and everybody, uh, packs food bags. But we're doing that at the TRA this year. So, um, and they're gonna, we're gonna do little chores of that building and the STEM lab and our, and our pantry that, that, there, December. I think it's, I'm gonna say twelve. Is that right?
Would it be a Wednesday?
Yeah.
That's the tenth.
Tenth.
Yep, we've got on that.
Yeah, the tenth.
Yep. Can we have my birthday party at the same time?
Cool. So anyway, I, I will, you know, let you know a little bit more about that, but if you want to come and.
Yeah, that'd be nice. Yes.
We're gonna, and we're gonna check, do a little, have some kids performing and playing some music too.
Be nice, yes.
Good. That does bring us to our second opportunity for comments from the public. Any takers? Okay, um, or the Board of Education comments?
I just had her give me another copy of the draft. Um, I didn't hear from anybody. If anything wanted to change, I would make the suggestion that on page three. Where it says soliciting the ex-official student board members coming in first during a board discussion could be changed to, um. You can change the wording to match that, um, that it's on the agenda for the student instead of. I could just change the wording this page. It's on page three because I used the draft, I used the draft that we got from the state. And I even sort of opened that first. I didn't think it was necessary to have it first. Page number, it's a very, number one.
Jordan, come.
Yeah. Because Jordan didn't have, get a copy. She may have minded.
Yeah, she can have mine. Cause I brought mine from last.
I'm good.
Okay.
So what are you changing?
It's the very first number one. It says soliciting the S F F of student board members first during the board discussion.
Oh, right, yeah.
The wording to say that soliciting the, according to the board agenda, um, that we, ways. I'll reword it. I just didn't do it yet. And then I can get them into the board docs or the superavow. So those things, if you want to go in early, you can. And then I have one more thing. So is this just an idea? I'm pulling up all these criteria. Um, so I, maybe it could be the meeting that we want to get as much of the community members out for like maybe the board, um, budget presentation. Or something like that. But I know the TRA has, is it, it's not the pantry. What is it called that they use? Is it called? The care closet eagle.
There, there's a care closet and there's the eagles covered.
Eagles covered in the care closet. And I just thought maybe as a board, we could maybe say, we're going to do a bo, a board education push to help fill these cupboards. And we're encouraging you to come to the board meeting. If you can't, we're going to have boxes where you can drop things off and just help do a push for the two cupboards. And it could be our, one of our core goals to become more community engaged and become more visual. So I just thought it might be an easy way for us to help the school and, um, maybe get more people out to our budget meeting.
And it would also be helpful if we put out what they need.
A list.
Yes, of things that are always in high need.
Yeah, and I thought since we got time ahead of time to do that, and maybe that's even something we can do with our student reps and, and our students in the students.
I think that's a wonderful idea.
That's a good idea. I just have a quick, um, question. Um, does the district have extra space for things like that? Given the food service requirements of stuff that are here already.
Well, we, so Heather Buddhist runs the, um, pantry and she, and so I, that's why I said to Chris when she had brought this up, that, that's a great idea, but we have to be very careful. That all, it's the things that we really need and they can't get everything from, um, the food bank. So there are some things, but it's the perishables that we have to be really careful about, you know?
I just know that in some other districts, there are things that those pantries were done and that weren't looked at and sure. And there's no room for the stuff they need to have, especially with government food coming in and all kinds of things that come in huge amounts. And they're being told, yes, you can. And there isn't any space.
Right.
And all hygienic items are a big need.
That's a big need.
Yeah, yeah, things like that. Yeah, we could get a list together.
So we, and we do, and we do go through those very quickly, but we'll, but we, the people who run those, I mean, we have the community schools people who, um, run that. They also prom dresses, um, the, uh, mother-daughter dance dresses. I mean, we've got those, but we can't, we can't have endless storage for them, but there is a need for those things. Little fancy shoes for those events.
Maybe just make a list of this on.
Yeah, or, or non-perishable.
It's just that.
Yeah.
Two different groups are doing what they're supposed to, but not.
Yeah.
And, and then it causes problems.
Right, which is why we said we would coordinate and.
Yeah, we'll check in on that month and the, on the things that go quickly and, and that we always need.
Yeah, and I know they do a lot of stuff like that around Thanksgiving, November time. So board budget period is in March. Am I correct? March or April? May, maybe so, but maybe before that, I don't know, something before school, maybe a March meeting or something. I don't know. But.
Yeah.
Okay, dude. I'm good. Thank you for listening. That's all I have.
Do any of the other board members have something they would like to bring up or talk about? I accidentally closed my agenda when I took out that packet. Um. Okay, um, we do need an, an executive session. Okay, so we are going to recess the public meeting at seven thirty-seven. Um. We will end the meeting directly after our executive session. So nobody needs to hang around and, um, stay for that. Um, may I have, oh, we're going to have discussion on.
Specific student matters.
Okay, student matters. May I have a motion?
Some move.
Was that you, Molly?
Yeah.
Thank you. And a second?
Second. Go ahead.
I got Michelle. Um, all those in favor? Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay.